Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 PM on February the 16th, 2021. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. All council members are present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Powell, you lead us in invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father, we are mindful tonight that there are people in our community who are sick. Lord, we're just grateful for your kind care with those who are recovered. We ask you to bless those who continue to suffer with the pandemic. And, Lord, we just ask that you would be healing in their lives and give them comfort as they go through that process, Lord. We're grateful for a strong community that supports each other, and we ask you to continue to bless Social Circle for being in that place. Lord, help us to be listeners of those issues that are important tonight with each other. And we pray over our council that they'd make wise decisions. We thank you for all those who work so hard at this city, who provide all the services and care for our citizens, Lord. And we just ask you to continue to bless them too, keep them healthy. We pray our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I do have a few announcements. Municipal Court, February 17th, 1:00 PM in the community room. Planning Commission, February the 23rd, 6:00 PM in the theater. Tree Board Meeting is February the 25th, 6:00 PM in our community room. Our council work session, March 4th, 6:30 PM here in the theater. Main Street Commission Meeting, March 9th, 8:00 AM at Church at the Grove. The Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, March 9th, 10:00 AM, and that's a Zoom meeting. Historic Preservation Meeting, March 9th, 6:00 PM in the community room. And our next council meeting, March 16th, 6:30 PM at the Middle School Activity Center. First up, we have presentations, first being an Arbor Day proclamation. To celebrate Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, David Keener, Mayor of the City of Social Circle, to hereby proclaim Friday, February the 19th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Social Circle. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So proclaimed 19th day of February, 2021. Our next item, the U.S. Census 2020 Presentation. Who has that?
I'll take that. I would just like to recognize that the city received a thank you from the U.S. Census Bureau for the efforts that we put in working through the census process to improve participation and bring attention to the census. And special thanks, I think, is deserved by the Social Circle city coordinator of our census efforts, Barbara Shalagater, who is here this evening, and also Glenda Davis, who was with her throughout with volunteering on the process. So we thank them for their efforts, and we appreciate all of the citizens taking part in the census. It will return in spades to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. New employee introduction.
Thank you. We have a new firefighter who has started, and he is Dylan Brown. He started last week. He works full-time for Newton County and then works part-time for us on the B shift. He's been in the fire service just under two years, but has demonstrated a desire to learn and attended a number of classes in his career thus far. He's certified as a firefighter-two, EMT-Basic, and has attended classes on vehicle extrication, Intro to Technical Rescue, Rope Corps, and more. He's currently learning the Social Circle area and getting checked off to drive our equipment, and we're happy to have him aboard.
Downtown rundown.
This is the downtown rundown for February 2021. The 2020 events, Social Circle Main Street Commission met on February the 9th to set the calendar of events for 2021. I passed out those earlier, so you all should have a copy of that. New this year will be a summer concert series in Friendship Park, and a few changes were made to some of the returning events. Our first event of the year will be an Easter Chocolate Crawl downtown, followed by a movie in Friendship Park. Farmers Market, I'm very excited to report that we will be expanding the Farmers Market in Friendship Park this year. Applications are available now and will be on our Facebook page and website. We already have two new vendors signed up so far. The season will open on March the 25th and go through November the 20th. The market will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Any questions?
Any questions for Amber? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have our 2019-2020 Audit Presentations by Malden and Jenkins, and I believe we have that set up via Zoom. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so I will now turn it over to Christopher McKeller for the audit presentation.
All right. Thank you for having me to be... May I? Do I need to start that one over?
Yes, we can hear you very well now.
Okay. My name is Christopher McKeller. I'm a director with Malden Jenkins, and I am here to present the audit results for the city for the fiscal year in June 30th. Two... Oh, wait. One... It has the results and some of the required communications, and then a few financial highlights. So... Well... This is just some info practice. As you can see there, we have served approximately 500 governments throughout the southeast over the past three years, 126 of those being citizens. As you can see there at the bottom, James Gitts is the quality assurance partner, and I was the director. On page four, this is the results of the audit. As you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as external auditors is to express an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. What I'm sure you all would like to know is how did the city do? And... Hold on. On page five, this gives some information about the comprehensive annual financial report, which you may refer to as a caper. And actually, the name of the capers will probably change in the next year or so. There's talk at Gassby that it will be changed to be acter, that annual comprehensive financial report. So that'll be fun, getting used to a new name. But as you can see there, this caper does go above and beyond the minimum requirements for the financial statements. This adds in the introductory section and the statistical section. The statistical section will give a 10-year history of various trends and different analytics to look at. So it includes financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, and some operating and demographic information. The city should be commended for their efforts on preparing a caper. This is a big undertaking to gather all the information and change the statements so that it fits the requirements of the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Program requirements. So I'd like to commend the city, Jennifer, and all of her efforts on pulling all this information together. Especially with us being in the pandemic on top of trying to produce a caper for the first year, definitely a big undertaking, and my hat's off to the city for that. Then on page six, this is a few financial highlights. And you can see there, the government-wide financial statements, which is the city as a whole, had approximately $35.8 million in assets, offset by $9.1 million in liabilities, And then on page nine, this shows a couple graphs for expenditures and revenues versus which left a net position or equity of approximately $26.7 million. expenditures. You can see there that approximately 49% of total general fund expenditures are public To further break that down, the net... safety. Here again, this is what you would expect to see at a city. capital, we had $1.6 million in restricted and unrestricted. On page 10, the fund balance decreased approximately $75,000 from the prior year, so fund balances In net position... Five... Or fifth... Please... Please... In the June 30th, 2020, of approximately 120 at a city. remain steady over the past couple of years. And then if we flip over to page 13, this begins some of the required communications. I definitely won't go through all of these, but I will point out a couple of things. So on page 14 there, you will see that we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management. Management was very much an open book. Whenever we needed information, if there wasn't readily available, they would give this... And a list of those is in the back of this auditor's discussion and analysis. We are independent of the city, which is required by ASCPA standards, and is what you would want from your... Just trying to call auditor. And these entries just happen to reach the threshold of a material weakness. The first one there is equity reconciliation. This was something that was noted when we first received the trial law for the beginning fund balance didn't match the ending fund balance from the prior year due to how a payroll cash account was recorded. Here again, I want to reiterate that this was just an accounting adjustment, nothing fraudulent, no missing funds or anything like that. And then the next one is the allowance for doubtful accounts calculation. This related to some of the accounts that were sent to collections and how the system had them reported. They weren't included in the allowance for doubtful accounts. Management, per our discussions, they have the... What do they need? And both of these shouldn't be an issue going forward.
I mean, I ain't getting nothing out of this. I mean, it ain't working. We just have to do this at the work session.
Can we communicate with them?
Twenty-one. And then the next one on page 18 is Gassby's Statement Number 87 with leases. And this one will be implemented in fiscal year 2022. This just changes how leases are recorded going forward. The last one that I'll mention is Statement Number 96 with subscription-based information technology arrangement. This is similar to the leasing standard in that they will be recorded the same way. So any subscription-based information technology arrangement the city would have, there would be an asset and a long-term liability associated with those. And with that, that's all I have. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city, and I thank you for your time.
We were unable to hear a fair amount of that because our internet failed periodically. There may be some council questions, but I think that we may ask you to go through this again with us at our March 4th work session.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the auditor before we...
I don't have any, but I would like to thank Christopher for being with us once again this year and completing this audit. And we'll look forward to hearing the complete version at our work session on March the 4th. And thanks to our staff, everyone involved in this process. I know Ms. Frick and probably Susan Adell, a lot of different people were involved. So thank you for your participation and efforts in that.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
All righty.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have citizen requests. I don't know of any. Do we have any council requests? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of our agenda.
To approve the agenda with the... Under the consent agenda, remove item six until we can talk about it in a work session.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to amend the agenda to remove consent agenda item number six. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on a second. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Shelton, second by Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have a public hearing. I'm sorry, Barbara, I'll introduce it as soon as I get the proper glasses on. This is for 2560 Social Circle Parkway, a manufactured home on the corridor, overlay certificate of appropriateness. And first off, Ms. Barbara with a staff report.
Yes, sir. What do you mean? As you can see, this is a certificate of appropriateness through the planning commission in Highway Corridor, C.O.A., and this is the 2560 Social Circle Parkway. They would like to put a manufactured home here that is zoning, is residential use, so a manufactured home is a specialty. The manufactured home will be a cost pay home. The property will have a natural buffer tree, a linear driveway, and the home will not be visible from the way. The natural buffer will be the tree, like I said, you will not be able to see the manufactured home from the roadways, got 500 feet across the parkway. That would be a 3.29 acre.
The next slide is the comprehensive plan. You'll see the arrow pointing to the 3.29 acres. It is in the future land use map, shows the commercial and institutional character area. The existing zoning is AG2, which does allow by right a manufactured home, Class A. To the left picture, it'll show where they're wanting to position the manufactured home. Off the driveway is already there, off the parkway. It's about 400 to 500 feet off the road, and about 200 feet off the back, which will have a buffer of trees, and the sides will be about 40 feet off each side. And this is a picture of a sample of pretty much what the manufactured home would look like. They will build a porch. They're also going to build a two-car garage. This is a picture of the driveway that is existing, and it will go back like 400 to 500 feet back into the trees to place the manufactured home. This is another shot from the Social Circle Parkway. And this is another angle from the Social Circle Parkway looking back toward South Cherokee. The Planning Commission had their public hearing on January the 26th, 2021. The Planning Commission recommended approval for the manufactured home to be placed on 3.29 acres at 2560 Social Circle Parkway. And Mr. and Ms. Smith are here, and they would like to come forward. Next statement.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members, everyone else in attendance. My name is LeBron Smith. It's my wife, Sinethea Smith. And we just wanted to come once again and ask for approval for us to place our home on the land that we purchased back in July of 2020. It's been a nice process with Ms. Barbara, and, you know, we're just asking for approval. We're ready to become citizens of this wonderful city.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith from the council? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comment now. If there is anyone here to speak in opposition of this request, please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
Make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor...